Parliamentarian, Dr. Sally Sarnstrom, our new superintendent. Behind them, Jean Howick, who will be the recorder for this evening, along with board clerk, Louise Schutz. To my left, I have Tom Muller, Carrie Kahler, John Prone, friend of Maymur, Colin Niemeyer, and board member Lynn Zentner will be here this evening, but she had another engagement, and so she will be a bit late. This afternoon, we had a wonderful introduction to the day with a speech from Bert Grover, the retired superintendent of the DPI. And he came up and gave a real inspirational message to the teachers and staff this morning. A lot of humor and a lot of heart, and it was very heartening to hear his remarks. Dr. Sarnstrom also gave a nice presentation this morning, and it was a good way to lead off the Teacher in Service Day. One of the good things about hiring a new superintendent is that you have an opportunity to look at your whole school program, to kind of lay everything on the table. It's all new to the superintendent, and go through everything, and see what's working and what isn't working, and how things can be made better. And so, it's been a wonderful opportunity, over the last two months that Dr. Sarnstrom has been here, to kind of start that process and going through things with her. In doing that, we have, as a board, developed three main district goals that we have set for this school year, and that these will be the main goals that everyone will be working from. They involve improving student learning, and better communication with the district and internally, and also development of a long-range budget planning process that's tied to systematic improvement, enrollment, and data and information. So, we were pleased to set these goals, because I think they're goals that we can accomplish, and they are goals that we can involve everyone in, from staff to community. And I thank Dr. Sarnstrom for kind of getting the ball rolling and getting us going on that. That concludes my opening remarks, and at this time, I would like to introduce our parliamentarian, Jay Telusse.
The powers of the annual meeting are set forth on page five of the report. I assume everyone has picked up a copy of those. I noticed just one typographical error under sub-three. The fourth word from the right-hand side on the first sentence should say "or," not Notice of the time and place of the annual meeting has been published in the Tomahawk Leader, the Merrill Photo News, and the Merrill Courier. Those publication dates are on page two of your report. During the budget hearing, which we will be churning into, there will be no motions, it's simply informative. The annual meeting is not a school board meeting, it is the common district's annual meeting. To some degree, it's advisory, as the Attorney General has ruled that the school board does have the right to accept the tax levy for operations and maintenance of the school district on or before November 1st of each year. Eligibility to vote is set forth on page four of the report. Basically, just two requirements: you need to be a citizen in the United States and eighteen years of age or older, and you need to be a resident of this school district for at least ten days before the date of this meeting. If anyone challenges someone's right to vote, there is a procedure under Wisconsin law, and that's set forth on page four also. Also on page four are recommended ground rules for the meeting this evening. We have traditionally followed also Robert's Rules of Order, and voting has typically been by a voice vote. Although, if there is a division in the House, we will have a standing vote unless voting by ballot is requested. The first item of business at this meeting is to nominate a chairman of the meeting. Typically, the chairman has been the president of the Board of Education, but anyone who is eligible to vote at this meeting is eligible to also be the chairman of the meeting. I will make three calls for nominations. I'm simply asking for nominations, there are no seconds to a nomination. So, I'll make the first call for a nomination of a chairman for this meeting. Mr. Van Leechout?
Mike Van Leechout, nominated Pat Berg as chairman of the meeting.
Are there any other nominations for chairman, or chairperson of the meeting? Third and final call for a chairperson. Hearing none, I entertain a motion that we close nominations and cast an unanimous ballot for Patricia Berg as chairman.
Mike Van Leechout, so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Ron Bane. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Motion's carried. Our first item will be to receive the minutes from last year's annual meeting.
Yes, Mike?
Mike Van Leechout, W6615, the clearing, Merrill. I would like to move to receive the minutes of the last annual meeting with the clarification of the question by Jeff Hetfeld, it's about the middle of the first page. We were told that, in the last line, that per Wisconsin statute, any motions on financial resolutions are considered advisory, other motions will be adhered to. Is that a correct statement in the minutes?
Without the actual record here, I would assume it was the correct statement, but I can't say for sure. Do you know if the record is at the office cell?
I would assume so.
My question would be then, is if we, when we get back to the resolutions that are in tonight's, are they advisory or are they binding?
Okay.
Last year, we were led to believe, and it's in the minutes, and it's right in the middle of the first page, we were told they were advisory only, and so therefore, our votes would have been probably different had we known that they were advisory rather than binding. So, I need that clarified before I vote on acceptance of minutes.
Thank you, Mike. I understand your question now. Jay, can you address that question as parliamentarian?
I guess Mr. Van Leechout, I wasn't exactly certain on your question, I was trying to find the minutes as we're talking. It says, "Financial resolutions are considered advisory," is that your question?
He wants to know if they voted down motions or resolutions at this meeting this evening, would that be an advisory vote, and would the board be able to continue to do those particular things? Is that what you're asking, Mike?
My reference is on page nine of the annual report.
Yes.
The budget book. Right after the nomination of Pat Berg as a chairperson, Jeff Hetfeld, President of Merrill Teachers Association, asked Attorney Telusse to clarify the status of motions and actions taken at tonight's meeting. Attorney Telusse explained that the resolutions are proposed and can be amended by any eligible voter, but reminded that the Board of Education has the authority and responsibility to set the budget, clarify the levy on or before November 1st. Per Wisconsin statute, thus any motions on financial resolutions are considered advisory, while other motions will be adhered to. Now, I need a clarification of that before we move into tonight's meeting, so we know whether or not it's a binding resolution or an advisory resolution. And I believe that the outcome of last year's meeting might have been different had we known, in fact, which are which.
Okay. So, would you like me to do that on a motion-by-motion basis when we, at that time? Would that be helpful, Mike, if we state whether it's advisory or needs to be adhered to?
That might be helpful.
Okay. Thank you very much. Did you want to make any further clarification?
Why, I think the phrase "thus any motions" from then on could be instructive, instructive minutes from last year.
Okay. I think he's just wanting a clarification as to whether or not at this meeting, that sentence is true. And as we do each resolution, if we would clarify, as, for instance, in the levy, whether it's an advisory motion or it's a motion that will stand as voted on. Okay? All right with that one? Okay, moving on, then I have a motion to receive the minutes from the annual meeting by Mike Van Leechout. Do I have a second to that motion? Thank you, Ted. A motion by Mike Van Leechout, second by Jeff Peterson, to receive the minutes from the last annual meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you. That motion carries. At this point in time, we move into the review of the 2000, oh, I'm sorry, skipped over the treasures report. Tom Muller will give the treasures report. Thank you, Tom.
The treasures report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2003. Beginning cash balance as of July 1st, 2002 was $9,810,968.28. Receipts totaled $38,865,485.99. Disbursements were $40,177,694.19. The resulting ending cash balance as of June 30th, 2003 was $8,498,760.8.
Thank you, Tom, for that treasures report. The next item is a motion to adjourn the annual meeting so that we may have a budget hearing this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn the annual meeting to a budget hearing?
Terry Van Stratten, so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Greg? I have a motion by Terry Van Stratten, a second by Greg Kautsa, to adjourn the annual meeting into a budget hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you. At this time, I will turn the podium over to Dr. Sarnstrom, who will start the review of the 2003-2004 budget report.
Joining me will be Pat Hart, the Director of Finance. And helping in the audience is Laurie Poggle with the screens. Each year, I like to put together a theme for the budget development. Even though I came in the latter part of the budget development for the next school year as the new superintendent, I did develop a theme as what had been happening before I got here, and how we had to complete it before we got it ready for the annual meeting presentation. And that theme is budget development with declining enrollment, as well as budgeting dependent upon legislative biennial action. So, those two issues we were dealing with in this district. Enrollment is a key issue, and we also had a lot of wait-and-see before we knew what the legislature was going to do, so we knew what school finance factors we were dealing Also, I have some goals of the presentation tonight that I'd like to share with you, so that you know how I'm coming at it, and so that hopefully it will make a lot of sense to you. The first goal is that I always want to paint a broad financial picture of the school district. Not how $10 was spent on some pencils, or $100 on some textbooks, but the broad picture of what is being done in the school district with the precious dollars that we have, both from state aids and from local levy. Also, to provide an opportunity to review with everyone here how revenue caps, equalization aid, and tax levy apply to the Merrill Area Public School District. Those are the key points of the ways we get our dollars available to us to run the school district. Also, it's a real key that I want to provide you, not only with numbers, but more importantly, to give you analysis of those numbers, so that the best decisions can be made to wisely use the financial resources that are provided by the taxpayers for our students. And lastly, to provide everyone with the best possible projection that we have for the 2003-2004 budget, knowing that we will not have our property value certified until mid-October, and also, we will not know the enrollment that we are dealing with until the 3rd Friday in September. So, right now, these are projections, but they're the best projections that we can First, I want to talk a little bit about revenue cap. In the state of Wisconsin, for about ten years now, we are under revenue caps. And what that means is that gives the amount of dollars, the general dollars that are available for a school district to spend. And the concept of how that works, you will see on this slide, and it's also in the book that you have. We start with last year's revenue cap. There was a given amount of money. And then, we have to look at the membership. It may be a plus or a minus, depending on the enrollment, on a three-year rolling average of the 3rd Friday count. So, 3rd Friday in September is very, very important to how many dollars we have available to us. And then, each year, we get some added dollars based on that membership. And that's a lot of the debate that's happened in the legislatures over the number of dollars After that adjustment is made with the added allowance, then we have a new cap, and now there are some additional adjustments that are made. And those adjustments can be pluses or minuses. One of the pluses or minuses that can happen is special education students moving in and out, and dollars follow them either from or to a different district. If there's property that has been switched from one district to another, that can change and be added or a plus into the revenue cap. Those are a couple examples. After you work on all of those adjustments, then you end up with a new cap. And I always like to describe it as, if you think of a cup, a cup is full of whatever, okay? You have your cup full way to the brim, and as that brim is full, that is your revenue cap. That's how much money we have to spend in that given school year. And if you would take a portion of that water, or whatever, out of that cup, that portion that you take out, whatever's appropriate for your district, would be the aid that the state will give you. And what's left on the bottom of that cup is what we have to tax locally on the local taxpayers. And so, this is a real key for us, is the revenue cap. And the only thing you've heard me say, talk about aid at all, is how, finally, is how much is taxed to the local taxpayers. So, it's absolutely key for a school district right now, the way the school factors work in the state of Wisconsin, is how much we have in our revenue cap. So, on this, can you see this? Yes, no? Anybody? I know you're awake out there, I can see you. Not really? Can we turn the lights on a little bit, so it's a little brighter, please? They're happy with me up there right now. Thank you. Is that better? Okay. When you are working with the revenue cap, and this is half of the revenue cap, and the other half I will show you in a minute, it'll be on the next slide. When you are working on the revenue cap, you work in this part of the box, and you can take this home and look at it more, I just want to give you the basic concepts with it, so you can work it through if you would like. But, in this section, you're working with last year's revenue cap. And it tells you what the cap was, and what the levy was in that part. At this point, here, in this school district, because we have had declining enrollment, there's a declining enrollment exemption, and that tells you what it was for the last school year. It was $236,000. In this part of the revenue cap, you work on the membership. You see the three-year's rolling average here. This was last year's rolling average, 2000, 2001, and 2002, and when we average those together, and there is something factored in for summer school, but when you factor those together, we had an average, a rolling average of 3,333 students. This was for last year. So, what are we projecting for next year, for the year that we're starting right now? Now, we look at the 2001, 2002, and 2003 school year. But 2003, we aren't going to know for sure, right here, how many students until the 3rd Friday in September. So, right now, we have a projection based on the number of seniors graduated versus the number of kindergartners we have projected coming in. And so, with that, when we average those, we end up with 3,277 students. So, you see, it is down. And I should use the word "members," not "students," because when you use "members," you're factoring in if someone is half-time, it counts as a half-time student. And so, it's FTE, it's built in to how much time is spent. So, you can see that we have a decline in the number of students in that average that we're going to be able to use on this revenue cap. We have a new declining enrollment exemption, that is something that was added to the revenue cap just about five, six, seven years ago, something like that, because so many schools were losing enrollment. So, this little, this process down here helps you figure out how much additional revenue you're going to be able to add back in that declining enrollment exemption. For us, it ends up to be $320,000 this next school year. Down here in this section, we have state aid for computers. A number of years ago, they pulled out, and they wanted on the revenue cap sheet to show how much aid we get for the computers in the district that are aided. Not just the school district, I'm talking about in the whole, in the businesses, et cetera, in the district. So, that's another figure that you'll see when we get over to the other side. Okay, on the other side, this is how it works through. We have last year's enrollment, I'm sorry, last year's revenue cap. We divide it by how many students we had, 3,333. So, that tells us, we had 7,000, I think you can read it better than I can, it's blurry from here. 7,300?
7,300.
Thank you. So, that's the revenue we had per student last year. So, that's what we're starting with, okay? And so, with that, after all that went back and forth, and back and forth in the legislature, they came down to that we could add $236 per student for this next year. Okay? So, you take your 7,300, and you add the $236, and we have the new revenue per member that we have. Okay? 7,646, thank you. Okay, that's our new revenue per member. Now, you multiply that times our new three-year rolling average of 3,277 students. So, now, we have a new cap of about $24,900,000-some. But now, remember what I just told you, the concept was, we have to go back, and we have to do some of those adjustments. So, the first adjustment that we have... Is that clear? It is not for me at all. Can we try to adjust that a little bit? Otherwise, I'm going to be... Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to look at our adjustments. And if you look at transfer service on line 8B, that line has to do with the special aid that I was referring to. And right now, we will refine this in the fall, depending on some of the other things that might happen, but the best information we had when we put this together last month was about $5,800 that we would have regarding the specialized students that I mentioned. So, you have a different adjusted revenue cap. Now, we add on our declining enrollment exemption of another $320,000 that we can add to that cap. Down here, you have to look at the dollars that we also have to levy for the facilities that have been built in the district. And so, we have two categories down here. 14B, where it's a little over $22,000, that is for the head start building, non-referendum debt. Down here on 15A, referendum-approved debt of over $3 million, that is our ongoing debt for the payoff of the buildings, and we will be explaining more of that later on in our presentation. Down here, we have $55 of charge-backs. Those $55, those are uncollected taxes from the prior year that we now tax into the next year. So, we end up with a revenue cap of $25,317,000 before we take off the aid. Okay, the next one? Then, we're going to go into the equalization aid. Does anybody have any questions on revenue cap? Is a concept there? Okay, looking at aid, this is the other key point of school finance. How do we get our aid? The state now gives us aid at three different levels. Primary aid, for the first $1,000 we spend on each pupil. Secondary aid, for the next $6,558, in other words, take that $1,000 off of that secondary ceiling, so we get aid on that, those dollars. And then, last tertiary aid, and that's any dollars that are spent above the $7,558 per pupil. Would you slide to the next one first? Okay, I'm going to point out three numbers on here, and then we're going to go back to the screen that we just passed. The three key numbers that you look at for aid is what is our aid membership? And if you remember, I said that you look at a three-year rolling average of September Friday counts, of 3rd Friday in September counts, for the revenue cap. But for equalization aid, you are working with data from the prior year, and you use the 3rd Friday in September count and the 2nd Friday in January, and you average those two numbers. So, you're always working with prior year data for aid. So, last year, for 2002-2003, we had 3,299 members for aid purposes, the average of September and January. The next line, total shared costs of over $28 million, that is the amount of dollars that the state will share in and give us some aid on. And lastly, we had property value of $939 million, almost a billion dollars in property value. Those are three very key factors as you use to determine aid. Looking at the sheet, and hopefully this will bring it all together for you, on how you get, how we receive our aid. If you look at this, this is the primary level of aid that I was talking about, on the first $1,000 that we spend on pupils. In our district, we spend $8,630 per pupil, for this formula. And if you look at the first $1,000, I said, they both give us aid on that, but what's the ratio that they give us aid? Well, the key is, you have to look at our property value, this dotted line here. This property value, we have a little over $284,000 per pupil of property in our district. That's a key line, I'm going to use it with everything I say, this line right here, the dotted line. Okay? So, the state, though, at this primary level, is guaranteeing $1,930,000 of property behind a pupil. So, what's the ratio of how much property we have in our district versus that guarantee? If you take that ratio, we have to raise 15 cents on a dollar, because we have 15% of that property guaranteed at $1,930,000. So, every $1,000 that we spend, the first $1,000 that we spend, we have to raise 15 cents locally on a dollar, and 85 cents the state will give us. Okay, so that's the primary aid. The secondary aid, again, we're still using the same line of property, but now, the state changes its guarantee. And the secondary guarantee is $966,000 per pupil, not the $1,900 over here. But it's also a different amount of money that they'll share in. And the money that they will share in, I told you, that ceiling was $7,758, but we had to subtract this $1,000. So, now, we're working on the $6,558 per pupil. The next $6,558 per pupil about that $1,000. The next $6,558 per pupil, about that one thousand. So what is again, again, what is our ratio? Of our $284,000 per pupil versus the guarantee of the state of $967,000 per pupil? That ratio is, we have about 29% of that guaranteed, our property. So on every dollar in this secondary level, locally, we have to raise 29 cents on the dollar. The state will give us 71 cents on the dollar. Okay? Now comes the third level. There's no ceiling, so it's any money above the $7,558. And so we have 1,072, if I can read. And out of that 1,000, a little over $1,000 that we spend at the tertiary level, we have to now look at our property guarantee again. And our property, again, is still at the $284,000. But the tertiary guarantee now is $378,000. By the way, that's the state average of property value behind students. And so we're still under this. So if you look at the money that's spent at the third level, we have to raise, we have 75% of that tertiary guarantee in our property. So on the, on the money above that, we have to raise 75 cents locally on a dollar, and the state gives us 25. If I had another slide here, and I was still doing this in Wisconsin Dells, the, the property value would be way over here. Okay? And so if the property value is way over here, you can see at the third level, they have more property behind each student than the guarantee. So what happens is now the, the aid has to start, given back. Aid gets subtracted at that level. It gets subtracted from the second level. So just so you have that in mind, that how important it is, the amount of property behind each student. Okay? Going to the aid sheet now, this is a simplified method, and if you had go online on DPI website or something, you would see something that would be a few dollars different than this. And that's because this is based on rounding, there are no cents built into this one. So if you take a look at here, you have your primary level, so our total dollars in primary aid is about $2,008. At the secondary level, we get $15,200,000. And at the third level, we get $876,000. But it, what's interesting, again, if we were in the Dells, this would be a minus number. There are some districts that are minus here and they have minus here, so that they only get, the first level is hold harmless, you get it no matter what. So this is all the aid they get. So just so you have a concept that there are districts out there that even can be down to hardly any aid. If I was standing at the annual meeting, well, let me say this before I go there. Right now, so our average of aid is 66%, in other words, 66 cents on the dollar. That has nothing to do with, not nothing, but it is not the same as when you hear that the state funds two-thirds of school funding. We just happen to still be at 66%. Some districts are at 80 or 90, some can be at 10. It just depends on how you fit into that formula I just shared with you. If I was, I had prepped the Dells budget for their annual meeting a month ago before I came here, and I believe it was at like 11 or 12% aid. And we're 66% here, just to give you a comparison. Any questions on aid? So the difference in levy that we have between last year and this coming year is a minus $233,000. So it's, the levy has gone down. Why has the levy gone down? Okay, let's break it down. The revenue limit for next year, 2003-4, is higher, is $364,000 higher. The charge backs, all of these numbers are very small in comparison to what the whole budget is. You can see the difference in charge backs and computer aid and debt service. The declining enrollment exemption is $83,000 different, that's a pretty good chunk. Transfer service, you know, not much different. But look at our aid. We are getting a lot more aid, almost $700,000 in aid than we had last year. So when you put all that together, that comes off to the same number I have up here, or would be right. So we are, levy is going down, $233,000 from last year. So if you look at the total levy, for Fund 10, the general operations, is about $6,404, the charge backs that I told you, the uncollected tax is $55. Fund 30, that is debt service for the referendum debt, of over $3 million. So the total levy is almost $9,500,000. If you divide that by our property value, and if you remember, I said, we won't know our exact property value until middle October, but right now, we are projecting a 0% increase. And the, and if you look, and we're not gonna go through every page in the book, but that book is meant to be a PR tool, it's meant to give you a whole, hopefully good picture of the district. But there are other places in the book that you could go back and see comparisons of the levy, comparisons of the aid over a number of years. And you could also see a comparison of property value. And so it's, it's not real consistent, so right now, we're using 0, we know it will be higher. So that could even bring the levy rate down. Right now, with a 0% increase, we are looking at a levy rate of $10.15. That levy rate compares to $10.40 last year. So it's down 25 cents, or 2.4% decrease. How do we put that into property value? And this is in your book. If you have a house assessed at $75,000, that should be a decrease of about $19 on your taxes. If you have a house valued at about $200,000, it would be a decrease of about $50 on your Now, this slide is just to give you a comparison about, even though I put those numbers up there about what would be the decrease in taxes, they won't all hold exactly true for each township. I'm only gonna point out a couple, but as you can see with the, I believe it's 14 townships or cities, the city and then the townships that we have in the Merrill School District, you can see here that the valuation changes, and sometimes it goes up and sometimes it goes down. So as the, as these different townships in the city tax for their portion of the levy, depending on how their property value has gone up or down, it's going to change exactly how much taxes are taxed to each house. The school district has absolutely no control over that. That is just some, that is totally outside of the school district. We have to work with equalized value, we give the numbers, and then the municipalities end up charging the taxes. But this is, helps you understand why there could be an up and down to exactly how it would work out, because of depending on one property, especially if one municipality has been just recently reassessed and had a real increase in property value, you know, it could be a plus or a minus. Okay? Any questions before I hand it over to Pat? Thank you.
I'm going to just give you a brief overview of the revenues. There is, you'll see a decrease between our revenues from last year and our projected revenues locally next year. That decrease is reflecting the change, the decrease in the property taxes. The next line is open enrollment. We stay pretty stable as far as the number of children that come into our district through open enrollment and leave our district through open enrollment. Right now, we're projecting an increase in our revenue that, from that source. The next line is reflective of the grants that we receive that are, are working, work through the CISA's. There is a decrease there, part of that decrease is because we have received word that we've gotten the 21st century funding. I don't have the exact numbers on that yet, and that will increase our revenues there. Our next line, revenue from state sources, shows a major increase, and that's the big increase in equalization aid. Federal, we had quite a bit more budgeted than we actually received this past year. Our actual expenditures in those title funds were down and will be carried over into next year's funds. This other financing sources is the Head Start loan, the state trust fund loan that we received as a district last year. You remember when we came to the, the board to ask about funding the building for the Head Start project? Head Start is actually paying for this as a rental on a year-by-year basis. But we, as a district, have to assume, we have to include it in our budget, because if for any reason Head Start was unable to make the payments, the district itself is liable for it. Our next big drop here is the teach funds. Teach funds have been cut from the budget for next year, and that's a big chunk, that's our technology. We will be, we have technology in our actual local expenditures, but the state funding of the teach loans is no more. The operating transfers are an accounting way of handling the Special Education Fund and the Head Start Fund and Food Service Fund. In our district, it's basically the Head Start Fund, not, excuse me, the Special Education Fund. These funds must be at zero, both Head Start and Special Education at the end of the school year. To make that happen, because all of the expenditures go out of there, but we only get state aids for part of Special Education and federal aids for another part. What is not funded by the state or the federal government must be funded by the district, and that's what that money goes to. Most of the rest of these stay pretty, pretty similar. You'll see there's an increase in the revenue from federal sources. Again, that's Special Education, they did not spend as much money out of their flow-through monies this year as we had budgeted, and that will be carried over into next year's. Head Start remains very stable, very consistent, that is under review, and we don't know what will happen after this year, but we're hopeful that it'll continue and that it'll actually continue to grow. Our debt service is part of our tax levy. These two numbers here are reflective of the refunding that we did two years ago for some of our debt service, it actually leveled out some of our payments, and that we'll talk about in a little bit. Non-referendum debt service, this is, is the Washington Roof, actually, and the Head Start program. And here you'll see there's money coming into it from Head Start and money that's being scheduled to receive next year from Head Start. Food service has a good fund balance, it doesn't grow a great deal, but it does grow, and their revenues are increasing. These next two funds are scholarship funds, they're expendable and non-expendable trust funds, and there are scholarships that are set up and that the district office actually controls the money for these scholarships. A good deal of the other scholarships actually are maintained by separate foundations, separate funds, and given through the district that way. Here you can see a graphic of what we just looked at. The big piece of the pie is the state funding. This is the equalization aid, and this is categorical aids. The categorical aids are like driver's education, which we won't have, library aid, and transportation aid. We do, the state does give us money back for transportation, for transporting our students, it's not a fully funded program, but it is a portion of our funding. This is the local, these are our local fees and our taxes. Again, we have open enrollment and CISA, very small portions of our budget, and the federal funding. But by far, the largest portion is the state funding, again, the equalization aid and the categorical aids. We have an increase in our general fund expenditures over our last year's expenditure. It's lower than what we actually had budgeted last year. Our budget last year was high because we had to budget for back pay, hoping for contract settlements for both the teachers and support staff unions. The teachers' union has settled, the support staff has not yet. But because of that, because we have fewer teachers, actually, and because we don't have to budget for the additional expense of one year's back pay, we're able to actually come in with a lower salary amount here. Again, there is no budget for the teach fund. This is something that we're going to sorely miss in this district. When we get to special, special education, those funds grow, and they continue to grow. This line here in the general fund is the operating transfer out, and that's what's used to balance the special education budget. Head Start has an increase in salaries and benefits, and they're fairly stable. Debt service, we have a slight decrease in our debt service payments next year as far as our expenditures. I'll go into that later, because you're gonna see a variety of numbers for debt service, and they get a little confusing. Food service, again, salaries are increasing. This union has not settled, so there is extra money, or is, there is money budgeted to be used for that settlement. That's why there's a, not an increase here as far as their expenses. Again, these are trust funds, our scholarship accounts. The pie, salaries are nearly 50% of our total budget. Fringes are another 25%, 23.9. Services, this includes personal services, if we have speakers come in, if we have travel expenses when we pay utilities, phone bills, those are all in services. Supplies includes textbooks, general supplies, software, that kind of thing. Equipment, these are capital items, these basically are over $500 for equipment. Short-term debt, this is our short-term borrowing, this is what we borrow in September or October, the amount that we borrow, and we have to pay back. We borrow it on a one-year basis so that we can keep our payrolls going and our bills paid. Insurance is eight tenths of a percent, that's going up this year. We have an increase in workers' comp insurance and also in our property insurance. We did adjust the deductible on our property insurance by a great deal so that we can keep that premium increase to a minimum. This is our transfer to Fund 27, that operating transfer, and then we have a very, very tiny slice of the pie for dues and fees. Our total expenditures for this next year's budget... Our total expenditures for this next year's budget, we're showing at $34,391,334, which is an increase over last year's budget of $505,000 or a one and a half percent increase. These numbers will probably not match if you're trying to match them to something else in your book because they have been adjusted for the operating transfer. When we actually do expenditures in the state report or the published report at the end of the book, it shows an operating transfer as an expenditure out of the Fund 10 and it's also being shown as an expenditure in Fund 27, so you're counting it twice. To get a better picture, we actually reduce both of these numbers by the operating transfers. Do you have questions on the revenues or the expenditures?
Okay, just to put it into some other scenarios of how the money was spent or saved and putting it into some words, maybe some pictures. If this staffing modification is different than the one that you have in your book because the one that we had in your book is the one that we prepared when we had to meet all of the timelines by statute to get ready for the annual meeting. Since then, we have been able to modify that somewhat. So on there, you can see that now at the elementary, we have added a Sage teacher at Washington and that is grant-funded and Sage-funded, so that is not out of the general fund. Also at the high school, again, we've been able to add some at-risk teacher at Atime and that is grant-funded. Down on the bottom, you can see what has been eliminated. So you can see where the savings would be in salary fringe benefits as you look at other portions of the book. The next few pages, and I'm only going to mention a few of them because you already have them and you can take a look at them, but how is your money spent? Your money is spent to enhance and to do a lot of quality programs for students. So we broke that out for you in several areas. The first one is curriculum instruction and there are many, many, many quality programs going on in the district and we're going to work very hard to bring all these together and even enhance student achievement from where it is now. If you look at technology down towards the bottom on this slide, you'll see that there's been development of a district website and also we are looking at implementation of family access software. So individuals, families will be able to also access and get information. Head Start, the construction of the building addition took place and also increased the number of children served by 12 students. That's a lot. Human resources, we're investigating an online application system that we hope to have running before too long. Also be writing job descriptions across the district. And in special ed, there's even more training, especially in the area of autism for staff and also a follow-up study is being completed on MAPS students as they exit. So a lot of quality, quality programs, items being done with the dollars that we have available. I just want to touch a little bit on enrollment and by any stretch of the imagination, I can't stand in front of you tonight and say I really studied it, I haven't been here long enough, but I just want to see, show you some patterns that I see evolving and as we work towards how we're going to work on this long-range budget plan, then we will really get in depth into some of it. But if you look at a couple of things, and this is in your book, and if you go, we're back to 1987, 88, and you can see, which I find very interesting, 3,296 students in the Second Friday in January count, and look where we were a year ago, 3,291. Go up to 88, 89, it was 3,314. Go to 2001, 2, back two years, it was 3,312. I'm not sure if it means anything, but I think it's kind of interesting. I don't know if there's, we'll end up with kind of a bell-shaped curve or whatever, but it's just something to at least start looking at and see, see if it does mean something. The other thing that I wanted to share with you is enrollment by building. So, and you know the district, of course, much better than I do, and maybe you can see some patterns in here that I can't even come up with yet. But if you look at this, on the bottom, we put the difference by building. And you can see that Maple Grove over the last, this is two years' time, from 2000 to 2002, there was a plus six students. In Midway, a minus 14. In Pine River, a minus three, I believe it is. Washington, a minus 12. And Scott, a minus six, a plus three in Jefferson. And then at Kate, a plus 11. So not major changes, but if you, if you take a look at the size of the building, it would be percentage-wide, it would have more effect. But if you look at the middle school and the high school in that two-year time, you see at the middle school, there still was an increase of students, about a class size, about 25, and at the high school, a minus 73. So you can see where the enrollment drop is. And if you would, if you think back at where we talked about the staffing, you can see that the staff reductions are more at the high school, so it fits the enrollment.
This slide is just to show you that we have a great deal of our budget in our total fund expenditures that are salaries and fringes. You'll note that the salaries are not going up a great deal for this next year over what we budgeted last year. Our benefits continue to increase. Retirement, as far as the state is concerned, and this is a dictated number by the state, our retirement benefits are going up another four tenths of a percent. They went up four tenths of a percent last January, they're going up four tenths of a percent this January. Our health insurance did not go up as much as we were anticipating this year. It was, the increase was about 6.7%. But this number also includes the early retirement benefits, the health insurance premiums that we pay for our early retirees. And we do have to include in here a potential increase for next year's health insurance. We pay our premiums a month in advance and we pay premiums through the summer, so when we budget this amount, it has to include premiums for three months of the summer. This is kind of a scary slide. Here we, we're seeing debt service and we've incurred quite a bit of debt, or it looks like quite a bit of debt, for our different buildings. A big chunk is the high school, middle school, Kate Goodrich. And we have a lot of money going to pay for those buildings. In 2001, 2002, we refunded the $10 million loan that we had taken out and that's this yellow bar here. The yellow bar, you'll see comes, and it stays quite even for the next five years and then it starts dropping consistently. What we did there was reduce one of these budgets or, or bills. Basically, we prepaid the bonds for this particular loan. So in 2006, there will be no more payment for this loan and we will start paying this one off at that time. The reason we do something like that is to even out our payments. Actually, in 2006, we experienced quite a significant drop in the amount of debt that the district owes and at that point, we probably, '03 and the fall of '04, when we have a tax levy out there, we start getting our taxes in January and continue to receive taxes through August. When we make our payments, the budget has to be from July through June. So our payment schedule is actually January through December, but our levy, again, we're levying for payments from January through December on this schedule, but we're taxing these payments and budgeting from July through June. So there's, there's a carryover from what we're paying in September, October. Those payments are coming out of the prior year's tax levy, but they're not reflected until next year's budget. So they cross the lines there. Is that understandable?
We're just about completed with all of this interesting information. So, but a topic on fund balance, and I know it's been a topic in the district in the past. So I wanted to share some information with you, a comparison to what Merrill has done over the years, to what Wisconsin Dells did while I was there. The, when I came into the Dells, we had approximately $2,303,000 for a fund balance and that is the budget or the fund balance that we maintain over the six years that I was there, approximately that. And just wanted to share with you how that intersected and how as we ran the business, and the school district is a business, and it's been real interesting coming here because Merrill is, literally, the Merrill School District is twice the size of Wisconsin Dells. So it's been real easy for me to use that as a pulse point to, as I look at different things, it's either half as much or double or whatever, and it gives me a good flavor if, as well as I knew what was going on in Wisconsin Dells, if we're in the same ballpark. So I wanted to do some comparisons of what we were doing and how we were using fund balance in Wisconsin Dells. You can see here in '99, 2000, in maintaining this fund balance, and when we say adjusted for designated funds, if you went back and looked at my, my annual meeting book for Wisconsin Dells, you would see that maybe this figure was $2,450,000 or whatever. But because we were selling house projects or we didn't sell a house project or whatever, there'd be some money in there that was designated for something else, but we removed it in these numbers so that it would be a constant number for comparison because it was not money, it was money that was already designated for something. So in this first year with $2,303,000, we were able to gain $88,000 because of how it helped our cash flow in the school district and we had so additional $88,000 to spend either on staff or on programs. At the same time, here with the district twice the size, twice the budget, $562,000 was the fund balance and so we had to find $59,000 in the budget to use. And so not additional money to use for programs, but having to take away almost $60,000. If I went back three years here, this would be another about $60,000 each year that we had to spend in the school district. If you go to 2000, 2001, you see that the interest gain was about $37,000. Well, here, it was a cost to the budget of $75,000. Here you start, in 2001, too, you see it's starting to level off some. We even had a cost at that point in time. Here it was a little bit higher. And now as the interest rates either way are not helping us, so it's really nothing. But as the interest rates start raising again, you're going to see that again, without some money in fund balance, it's going to cost us money as opposed to we could be making money to use for programs and staff. The other thing that's key about a fund balance, again, as you try to run a district, as you run a business that is about between 25 and 30 million per year, this, the amount that you have in your fund balance intersects with the bond rating you can receive. And while I was at Wisconsin Dells, we received a double-A bond rating. That helps you with the insurance rates that you could get. In Merrill, you have an A minus. So possibly, I can't give you an exact figure, but I do believe if you went back to the slide that, that Pat was just explaining on debt service, we may have a lower percentage rate, even a tenth of a percent on millions of dollars adds up to a lot of money. And so hopefully, this gives a little different flavor of where having some money in fund balance is very important and we'll keep monitoring that in the future. Here are the numbers for fund balance since 1997, anywhere from $376,000 up to right now, you see $2,673,000. But as you can see, I can give the exact number, if you go back one slide for a second please. Right now, it's $1,009,000. So some of that money is designated and you see down here what it's about. There's, there's either been times when a contract hasn't been settled with the teachers or the support staff and so that money is in there waiting until the contract gets settled. Another one where you'll hear this Act 11, that is some money that the state, the WRS, the retirement system gave back to school districts and gave them multiple ways to use it. Merrill School District still has that sitting there deciding which is the best way to, to use that money and build on the road. So the explanations are down here, but right now, then, we have that amount of money. That's fine. So with that, Pat will wind it up. Unless, is, are there any questions or comments on fund balance before we do? Okay.
These basically are the differences in our budget from '02, '03 to '03, '04. We have what appears to be an increase in salaries and fringes of $375,000. As I said before, our property and workers' compensation insurances are going up. We're losing about $145,000, that was our income this past year, in teach funds. Through laid off or eliminated positions and budget, other budget cuts, we're down $430,000 at this point in time. Last year, we settled our teachers' contracts, so we don't have this dollar amount budgeted this year for back pay and fringes. We are expecting increases in our natural gas and electricity and there's some talk about water increases. So our utilities are going up and that amounts to our total difference, our total increase in budget of $504,000, almost $505,000.
School, school finance is not one of the areas that it's real easy to make it hip or make it, you know, real, hopefully, interesting to talk about and share all the numbers. But hopefully, we've met some of the goals that I shared on the front end and put the budget and laid it out there for you in a way that you can see it isn't just the numbers, it is what actually happened with the program improvements and the enhancements to what we've done with staff as far as pluses or minuses in the numbers, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully, we've been able to paint a picture for you that helps you understand more of how your dollars are being spent. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sinsstrom and Pat Arndt for the presentation and I'll ask once again, before I ask for a motion, if there's any questions or comments from the audience. Seeing none, I would ask at this time for a motion to reconvene to the annual meeting. Thank you, Paul. Do I have a second to that motion?
Karen Halt.
Thank you, Karen. A motion by Paul Clippel, second by Karen Halt, to reconvene into the annual meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Anyone abstaining? That motion carries, and we are now back on the agenda at the annual meeting. The first item of business would be Resolution A. That's listed on your agenda, and it is also printed out on page six of your budget booklet. For clarification, Mike, this Resolution A under Section 120.12, Subparagraph 3, Jay has indicated that this resolution could be adjusted and most probably will be by the school board because final figures for equalization and those things are not set yet. So this could be considered an advisory motion, if that helps to clarify it for you. At this time, I would look for a motion on Resolution A, adoption of tax levy for 2002, 2003, 2004 school term for transportation sites, buildings, maintenance textbooks, and operations in the amount of $6,439,639. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution A?
Greg Keltzer.
Do I have a second to that motion? Colin? I have a motion by Greg Keltzer, second by Colin Niemeyer, to adopt Resolution A. Is there any discussion or questions relating to Resolution A? Seeing none? Thank you. We will be voting on Resolution A. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Resolution A is passed. Thank you very much. Resolution B would also be considered a resolution that could be adjusted by the school board under Section 120.12, Subparagraph 4, due to the fact that the numbers on this particular resolution also are not the absolute numbers at this time. Resolution B is the adoption of a tax levy for debt retirement in the amount of $3,46,240. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution B? Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second to that motion? Tom? A motion by Jeff Peterson, second by Tom Mueller, to approve Resolution B. Is there any discussion or questions on Resolution B? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you. We're moving on to Resolution C. I'm told by Jay Talusty as parliamentarian that this would be a binding resolution. So the vote on this Resolution C to authorize disposal of surplus school property, if necessary, were voted down, that would be a binding motion. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution C? Thank you, Paul. Do I have a second to that motion? I have a motion by Paul Clippel, second by Jan Fortman, to approve Resolution C. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of Resolution C signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Resolution C carries. Resolution D, to authorize the purchase of real estate, also listed in your book on page seven, if you're following along. That resolution would be considered a binding resolution to the school board for this coming year. At this time, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution D? Thank you, Rich. A motion by Rich Thwaites. Do I have a second? Tim Mickey?
Second motion.
Thank you. A motion by Rich Thwaites, second by Tim Mickey, on Resolution D. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? We will vote on Resolution D. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you. We've carried that motion. Resolution E is to provide for legal defense or prosecution in which the school district may become involved. That also is a binding resolution. Resolution E. All those, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution E? Kurt? Do I have a second? Thank you, Colin. I have a motion by Kurt Ekis, second by Colin Niemeyer, to adopt Resolution E. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of Resolution E signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Jay Talusty abstains for the record. That motion is carried. Thank you. Resolution F, fixed salaries and authorized reimbursement and expenses of school board members. The, if you are looking at the resolution on page seven, you will notice that we've used the statutory language in that motion. Dr. Sarnstrom did that because we had the motion not passed last time. Mr. Bain?
Ron Bain, W1064, Second Avenue Gleason. And if I may put a little color to moving the acceptance of this resolution, Madam Chairman, whereas members of the school board are elected at large by the community in a public vote, and whereas each board member is dedicated to education and the community, and whereas many board members are professionals, retired professionals or highly trained individuals that make available their skills outside the educational system, and whereas some school board issues are not easy to vote on or to convince the community of expected results, therefore, be it resolved that school board members never have to serve without receiving the small per deal like they had of the past, which was $30 per meeting, and never again on a fully expected volunteer status. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Ron, can we have a copy of that if you would?
So, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I do move the acceptance of Resolution F.
You need to put an amount in there, though, because it's blank. So it has to be per meeting or...
Okay, we as board members of the past gave up the extra long meeting per deal, and we all were satisfied with just receiving the $30 plus travel expenses to meetings or whatever expenses that the meetings incurred to us.
So your motion is to stay at $30 per meeting
$30 per meeting.
And be reimbursed for normal travel expense and expenses related to our duties?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second to that motion? Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ralph. I have a motion by Ron Bain, second by Ralph Neal. Is there a discussion? Mike?
My family showed W615, Jerry. I would like to move by substitution the language contained in last year's failed resolution.
So you are asking that we reinstitute the motion as it was stated last year? Is that correct, Mike?
That's correct.
Okay. And that motion did indicate $30 a meeting and reimbursement for expenses?
It was $30 for every day.
Thank you. Page 13, let me just clarify. At that time, it was Resolution F, so you are asking for compensation and authorized reimbursement of expenses, designating the monetary compensation and expense reimbursement for school board members attending board authorized functions be as follows. $30 per meeting for any committee or regular board meeting. Board members will be paid an additional $30 when serving in their official capacity at any meeting lasting longer than five hours, including travel time. Maximum salary paid to board members per day shall be $60. Board members will be reimbursed at the IRS rate per mile travel allowance. Board members will be reimbursed up to $25 per diem for meals upon board approval. And board members will be reimbursed for overnight accommodations upon board approval. In addition, the board president will receive an annual salary of $500. That is the motion that Mr. Van Leeshout asks to be substituted. Do I have a second to the substitution?
Mark Seaman, second.
Okay. So a motion by Mike Van Leeshout, second by Mark Seaman, to substitute the motion as stated and read by me on page 13, which is from the minutes from last year. Is there discussion on the motion to substitute? If there is, please come to the microphone.
Ralph Neal, 2508 Rio Grande, here in Merrill. Is there any consideration to be given to the clerk on that board president, $500 and clerk? Because that was under concession, I mean, discussion for a long, long time and never really acted upon. And I'd like to add a friendly amendment to that.
Okay. So, and there are some boards that do give extra...
Yes, the clerk, because of the extra duties and the time that they have to do.
Okay. If you're asking for a friendly amendment, I need to ask Mr. Van Leeshout if he is willing to amend his substitution motion.
I would accept that if you would state the amount again.
It'd be the same as the president.
$500 for the president and the clerk.
I accept that as friendly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Neal. Thank you, Mike. Is there any other discussion on the motion of substitution? Does anyone need any clarification on the motion? Okay, the vote I will be asking for is first whether or not to substitute this motion for the original motion. If you vote aye on that, this will be the main motion, and then we can have additional discussion, if necessary, and vote on this as a main motion. So right now, we're voting to substitute this to become the main motion. All those in favor of the motion to substitute signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you. The motion to substitute now becomes the main motion on the floor, and as the motion is stated, page 13, with the addition of the clerk to receive extra remuneration. Is there any further discussion on that? If there is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Kurt? Colin and John? No one else? Thank you. That passes, and thank you very much for the kind comments from everyone. This board that worked last year without pay was a very dedicated board, so I appreciate your comments and thoughts. Resolution G is to authorize the school board to provide the school lunch program. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution G? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second, Mike? I have a motion by Jerry Feeney, second by Mike Van Leeshout, to adopt Resolution G. Is there any further discussion on Resolution G? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you very much. That motion carries. I'm going to complete this last section, and then we'll be doing something a little different from past meetings. Dr. Sarnstrom normally approves the minutes of this meeting at this meeting because this is the group that participates in the minutes, and it's always difficult with annual meeting minutes. So at the end of the meeting, we're going to have the clerk read the minutes and then ask for adoption of those minutes. The first order of business, then, is to set the next annual meeting date. According to statutes, unless changed at an annual meeting, a common district such as ours must meet at 8:00 PM on the fourth Monday in July. The annual meeting location must be in a district school or the nearest available place designated by the school board. That would indicate that the fourth Monday in July would be July 26th for 2004. Do I have a motion on the next annual meeting date? Paul Clippel? Do I have a second to that motion? A motion by Paul Clippel, second by Rich Thwaites, to set the annual meeting date per statute at July 26th, 8:00 PM, for the next annual meeting? Is there discussion? Seeing... Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Traditionally, this district has always run their meeting on the last Wednesday in August at 7:30 PM. And I ask why there would be a need for a change when the information from the state doesn't come out very early in July?
I'm just reading the statute, so basically, I think we're looking at changing to follow the statute, trying to do it a little earlier in the year and get things ready. If, you know, it's on the floor, is the motion? Any other discussion? Ron?
Without knowing the true and attempt of last year's attempted change at the date of our annual meeting, we ended up, like Mr. Van Leeshout said, with the same date. And I think our community is trained and prepared for this date before Labor Day. So I would also slightly keep it to the last Wednesday in August.
Okay. Do you wish to amend the motion?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I have an amendment by Ron Bain to substitute August would be this day, Wednesday. If we stay with the Wednesday, it would be August 25th, to substitute August 25th for the July 26th meeting date. Do I have a second to that? Mike? Okay. Second by Mike. Motion by Ron Bain, second by Mike. Is there any discussion on the amendment to change the date to August 25th? At 7:30, Ron? Yes. Seeing no further discussion, we are voting on the motion to amend the meeting date to August 25th. So this is the motion simply to amend it and replace July with the August date. If you're in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Can I have the ayes stand, please? Do you count them? Who'd you get?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. Could I have the nays stand, please?
We have one in order.
Twenty-three? Twenty-three ayes. We're now counting the nays. Okay, it's obvious that there are less nays. I believe there were fourteen. The ayes have it, then. We have amended the motion to be the next meeting, August 25th, 7:30 PM. All those in favor of that motion signify... All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. One nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you, that motion carries, and it will, the next meeting will be August twenty-fifth at seven thirty. At this time, we would entertain any other matters that are provided by law relating to the management of the school district under section one twenty point ten. Is there any other business? There is no other business, I would ask the clerk to come forward and read the minutes so that we may approve the minutes of this meeting. Please.
Okay, these are the, um, minutes of the annual meeting and budget hearing of Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, two thousand and three. The meeting was called to order at seven thirty by Board President Pat Berg. In her opening remarks, she included the goals of the district for the year two thousand, the school year, two thousand three, two thousand four. The parliamentarian Jay Tullusti was introduced, and he reviewed the procedures for the meeting. A motion was made by Mike Van Leeshout to nominate Pat Berg as chairperson. Motion passed. A motion was made by Mike Van Leeshout, um, for acceptance of the meetings of last year's annual meeting, and he asked for clarification as to which of the resolutions of this year's annual meeting would be binding. His motion of acceptance was seconded by Jeff Peterson, all voted aye. The treasurer's report was presented by Tom Muller. Terry Van Stratten made a motion to adjourn the annual meeting to have a budget hearing. Motion seconded by Greg Kautza, motion passed. The review of the two thousand three, two thousand four budget report was conducted by Dr. Sally Sarnstrom and Pat Arndt. Motion by Paul Clippel, second by Karen Helt, to reconvene the annual meeting, motion passed. Resolution A, as in your booklet. Motion made by Greg Kautza, second by Colin Emeier, all voting aye, motion passed. Resolution B, as in your booklet. Motion made by Jeff Peterson, second by Tom Muller, all present voting aye. Resolution C, authorizing the sale of school property. Motion made for adoption by Paul Clippel, second by Jan Fortman, all voting aye. Resolution D, authorizing acquisition of real estate. Motion made for acceptance by Rich Thwaites, second by Tim Mickey, all voting aye. Resolution E, providing for legal assistance. Motion for adoption by Kurt Ekis, second by Colin Emeier, all voting aye, with Jay Tullusti abstaining. Resolution F, regarding resolution for compensation and authorized reimbursement of expenses for board members. Motion by Ron Bane, second by Ron, uh, by Ralph Neal, adopting a thirty dollar per diem with mileage. A substitution was recommended by Mike Van Leeshout, second by Mark Seaman, to substitute the language in last year's failed resolution. Ralph Neal offered a friendly amendment to add a salary of five hundred dollars for the board clerk. That amendment, or that friendly, that substitution was approved, and, um, all voting, all members here voting aye, with abstentions from Kurt Ekis, Colin Emeier, and John Crone. Resolution G, authorizing the school lunch program. Motion made by Jerry Feeney, seconded by Mike Van Leeshout, all voting aye. Regarding next year's annual meeting, motion by Paul Clippel, second by Rich Thwaites, to conduct the meeting per statute at July, for, and have the meeting July twenty-sixth, two thousand and four. Ron Bane amended the motion, and his amendment was seconded by Mike Van Leeshout, to have the meeting the last Wednesday in August, which would be August twenty-fifth, two thousand and four, at seven thirty. The amendment was passed, and the motion was passed, so next year's annual meeting will be Wednesday, August twenty-fifth, here. And, does anybody have a correction to what I just read?
Just one comment on the, um, number three, the motion to receive the minutes of the last, rather than accept.
Okay.
The technical point.
Received, okay.
Thank you.
If there are no other additions or corrections, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of this annual meeting, August twenty-seventh? Tim Mickey, do I have a second from Jean Bevel? Motion by Tim Mickey, second from Jean Bevel, to approve the annual meeting minutes of this meeting, August twenty-seventh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you very much, this is the time when I would ask for a motion to adjourn, there will be a short reception after this meeting out in the hallway for anyone who wishes to chat with Dr. Sarnstrom, or anyone else?
Ralph Neal.
Yes. I have a motion to adjourn from Ralph Neal, do I have a second? Jean Bevel. Motion by Ralph Neal, second by Jean Bevel, to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion carries, the meeting is ended, thank you all very much for attending, good night.
Heidi Burrows. White Lucky. Megan Byer. Sarah Carlson. Colson Champamont. Kyle Christensen. Todd Sobolko. Amanda Siprow. Isaac Cole. Jessica Bartwright. Cassie Jo Debo.
...